Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's special committee of the whole meeting. This meeting is called to order. Let the record show that all the council members save for Alderman Miladra are present. Of course, Mr. Bruno is joining us remotely. We have a brief agenda, but an important agenda this evening. Number one on the agenda is discussion regarding outdoor liquor sales here in the city of Geneva. As you all heard, we have our Director of Economic Development Kathleen Timaschenko joining us in the bunker in beautiful Bartlett, Illinois to walk us through the PowerPoint presentation that we will put on the screen. Mr. Bruno, we're going to lose sight of you temporarily while we have the PowerPoint running.
Hey, are we ready?
Nobody here seems to mind, so we just wanted to let you know.
I am nothing to look at.
And Kathleen, whenever you're comfortable proceeding, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I apologize for not being there in person. So tonight, we are going to talk about two topics for our policy discussion: outdoor liquor sales on public property and also public parking space licensing. So first, we'll start with the outdoor sale on public property for part one. So our current regulations do not allow liquor sales on public property. So they're restricted to private property only with the exception of city festivals when special liquor licenses are issued for those. So we have determined that a code amendment is possible based on a few things. There's been some subtle changes to state statutory language, and from that language, we've researched some comparable communities, other non-hungry communities, and we've worked with the city attorney to kind of talk through these things and understand them better. So tonight, we'd like to talk about, or we'd like to review, a proposed code amendment to add liquor licensing, a liquor license classification for sidewalk cafes on public So first, we thought it would be helpful just to review sidewalk cafe permits. These are something that have been available in the city since 1995 when these regulations were first enacted, and there are a few, though, that get issued annually, and it's likely because it's limited applicability and given the liquor exclusion, you know, I think that it's not likable to too many of the businesses. So we see Starbucks, they have the table out on State, and All Chocolate Kitchen has tables on James, and Cocoa Bean also, you know, puts table out through this program. So the requirements, they are a little older, more antiquated than recent changes would allow. One of the things that is interesting is that it talks about tables and chairs and benches being allowed, but then it has kind of a broad stroke, other items in character to a sidewalk cafe, which is, you know, up for interpretation. A site plan must be approved. Items must be kept immediately adjacent to the building, and they're not able to be extended beyond the leasees or licensees storefront. It's required to maintain the five feet of pedestrian passage. No liquor consumption is allowed, and the tables are supposed to be removed during Swedish days. So for a proposed sidewalk cafe amendment, we're looking at the possibility of adding a new license classification that would be available to existing liquor license holders who can meet specifications: specifications, dram shop insurance, the insurance that we carry for the right of way, debastment training, et cetera. Just everything that I think everybody already realizes are required for the license holders. So we are also proposing that there may be an opportunity to reduce the size of the pedestrian passage area from four to five feet, which, as I will review a little bit later, will maybe help some of the businesses achieve the goal and still create enough passage for the pedestrian traffic that is happening in the areas where this will be applicable. We also would think it would be very important to restrict the table size. Two tops is probably best, no picnic benches or round tables. And this is because what happens is, we saw this during COVID, the businesses, they do it the right way, they set it up, but then when patrons come and people, you spread out and you kind of want to move around, and the more people and tables that are there, that's when things start to kind of drip into the public access area, and it's just kind of a natural thing that people do. So if you restricted it to two tops, then you would probably keep it tighter and avoid some of the problems that we had during COVID. We also would like to clarify some language, getting rid of that ambiguity of, you know, what you think should be in a sidewalk cafe versus what some other person thinks should be in a sidewalk cafe. We want to not allow heaters and bussing stations and food prep stations, and then we think it's not necessary to keep the Swedish days exception because people know how to move around during festivals. And this is also the time that people really want to be out there enjoying those spaces. And then, you know, if there's any other suggestions, you know, we could talk through those at the end of the presentation, but I just wanted to put "other" because perhaps people are thinking of other things right now. So the proposed changes, the results of the proposed changes, if you look at the picture that we included, we did try to do a quick study of what this would mean and how this could impact the community, and so this is a snapshot of the larger GIS study that we conducted. But we determined that, you know, most State Street liquor licensees, from Ale House to Buttermilk, and then a few licensees on Third Street, both sides closest to State from niche to nosh, would have an opportunity for a sidewalk cafe, they'd be able to put out a couple of tables. And this could really, you know, help drive more traffic, foot traffic, to State Street. It could attract new customers that drive through town and they see that there's tables and opportunities for outdoor dining. As we hear from the restaurants, there continues to be strong customer demand for outside dining, and this would really showcase well for the community, and we would see people sitting out having fun in front of these places. So we did take a look at the parkways. As several of you are aware, we do have one business owner who has been requesting use of parkways again from what was done in 2020 and 2021 during COVID. The issue with parkways is, you know, after we kind of looked at it and thought it through, we are not recommending that at this time, and there's a couple of reasons. You know, we have 23 restaurants or cafes who could potentially take advantage of this just on South Third Street alone, and, you know, that could potentially really make a big change to the Third Street streetscape character, ambiance. Third Street is really designed with the parkways, the trees, the historic feel of, you know, strolling down kind of this residential open area, and if you start to, you know, put the tables like we saw a couple of years in a row, it really starts to, you know, erode that. And also, the wear and tear on the parkways. If we were to look at the parkways again, it would likely be necessary to start to harden those parkways, to, you know, put some surface on the ground. Tree preservation would be necessary. We'd probably want to limit the number and the type of tables. We need to address the sprinklers which are in the parkway, and then there's also underground utilities in the parkway that would need to be addressed. So we're not saying that this could never be analyzed. We actually included it in our Rebuild Illinois Main Street grant that's pending. We did apply for a grant to take a look at the streetscape. You know, as we know, it's 20 years old, it's got some wear and tear, it needs some upgrading. And one of the ideas that was brought forward as part of the grant application is thinking about, you know, whether we still want to preserve that same design approach for Third Street, or whether there's some opportunity to do something different and as part of that, creating more public spaces that are not passive. With that project, there would be that analysis opportunity. So we're not recommending it now for those reasons, but perhaps it will come back later. So we are asking right now if there's consensus to proceed with the sidewalk cafe proposed license amendment, and what is the thought with the City Council on the presentation and the items that we brought forward.
At this time, Kathleen, are you prepared to respond to questions or curiosities?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. The floor is open, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Marx.
Kathleen, just one question, actually. Since it is going to be on public property, do we require then any liability insurance as the city named as one of the insureds?
Yes, absolutely. That would be part of the licensing process. So because there's liquor, you know, it would have to be included in their site for the liquor licensing and all the dram shop, but there would also be a requirement for the city being, you know, named also insured and kept protected from the business owners' insurance.
Okay. And then, is this going to be a licensing that we do, and how often will that be renewed? Then every year, every two years, three?
It would be part of their annual license that is obtained with their liquor license, so I believe it's May 1. The cafes, though, are likely, what we would recommend is that they would expire on December 31st at the end of the year, and then they would be renewed, I believe it's May 1, that those liquor licenses get renewed.
And just one other question. What is the chamber's thoughts on leaving them up during the festivals, the cafes? Have we had any feedback there or not?
You know, I haven't talked, I've talked to a lot of different members of the chamber. I know, I have talked about this with the Chamber Board, and I know that the President has mentioned to me that, you know, he would like to see the city try to find ways to allow more outdoor dining because it's so exciting and it creates this kind of buzz. So I know that he has mentioned that to me before, Scott Leven, but I think that, you know, just like any other group, there's varying opinions. I know one person on the chamber, you know, has, there's all sorts of alternative opinions, but I think as a whole, the idea that we would create more excitement in the area through having more outdoor dining and have ourselves be more competitive with other communities who are able to offer this would be well received.
Ms. Ruby, then Mr. Koserog, then Mr. Swanson.
So first of all, I really love the idea. I just have a few questions, clarification things that I'm not quite understanding. Private versus public property lines. How do we know where the private property line for a restaurant ends and the public property begins?
Do you want to answer that, Kathleen? Why don't we have Ms. Dawkins answer that?
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Dawkins.
So, I mean, we look at the property lines through our GIS, but when we talk about private versus public, there are many restaurants right now who you know have outdoor seating that is on their private property, and they can license that area. So along State Street, for the most part, the private property ends right at the storefront because the sidewalk extends all the way to the storefront, so that's all public. On Third Street, they may have a little more, I'll use, since Mike's sitting in front of me, Little Traveler has private property, that whole front grass area is his private property, but then from the sidewalk to the curb is all public.
Okay. So if a restaurant is leasing their space, does that make it?
No, that would still be private.
That would still be private property, okay. So this only applies to businesses, the proposal is this would only apply to businesses on 38?
No.
But not on Third Street?
No, it would apply to some businesses, there's a few businesses on Third Street that have some public sidewalk right at their storefront. Others, that's private, so when you look at, and Kathleen can chime in, that's why it's hard when she's not on the screen, but in Dotson Place, some of that is private, the sidewalk is private property, but when you go further up to like where Nish's, that's public property.
Okay.
So if you, and I can put the map back up, but if you look at the map, it looked like there was like in front of Nish, in front of All Chocolate Kitchen currently has a sidewalk cafe. There was some on Second Street as well, that there were four or five places that looked like it may be able to work.
Okay. So, and we're discussing sidewalk cafes with or without alcohol?
So we already have a permit for sidewalk cafes without alcohol, so we're not proposing necessarily making a change there. What we're proposing is adding sidewalk cafe to the liquor licensing.
Okay.
So that would be the new thing, so it would be a new license, much like any restaurant now that has outdoor seating, they are required to get an outdoor seating license in addition to their liquor license.
Okay.
So this is just kind of like an add-on. You have to first have the liquor license, and then you would be able to add on the sidewalk cafe.
Okay. So the current businesses that have patio areas, this is irrelevant?
Correct. No, it's irrelevant except to the point that if they have public space in front of there and they would like to expand to that, they would be allowed to do that as well in addition to their private area.
All right. And then, can you define the pedestrian passage area? Is that just strictly the sidewalks? Okay. And how wide are our sidewalks? Do you know that, Kathleen, off the top of your head?
On State Street?
On either State Street, Third Street?
I think it varies.
Generally speaking?
Yeah.
State streets are wider than.
They're generally, five feet is the size of the concrete, and on State Street, they're don't, and on Third Street, I think it's about seven, but I'd have to double check that.
Okay. So where, what I'm trying to understand is, you know, even if we decrease the pedestrian passage area from five feet to four feet, but we only have a five-foot wide sidewalk, you can't squeeze a table on one foot.
Correct. And I don't think that's the case, but we would have to verify.
Okay. And then just one last question. I agree with the two tops, I think that makes sense, but I don't understand why we're saying no round, only square, because I feel like round is, takes up less space and...
I think the idea is the square could sit directly against the building, or a round table can't get right up against the building because the building's flat and a round edge.
Okay, so are you...
It's like putting a round circle in a square hole when we were kids, right?
So you're anticipating limiting the two tops to seats?
Correct.
It won't be allowed for people to pull up a chair and make a third?
Correct. So what, and again, Kathleen can expound, and Kathleen, please, if I'm overstepping, let me know. What we discovered during COVID, the majority of the complaints that we got were not because the restaurants had set up tables outside of the area, but because people were moving the chairs and gathering in bigger, larger groups and taking up more space. So we're trying to avoid that as much as possible.
And I don't think we're going to be able to stop that unless we have them like permanently affixed to the ground. I think people are going to move things.
But if there are smaller tables to begin with, I think what we're saying is maybe there's less likelihood.
Okay. Yeah, no, I love the idea, I'm all for it, I just, I anticipate that continuing to be an issue, just knowing people are going to, or assuming people are going to just use the space however they deem fit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koserog, then Mr. Swanson.
Thank you. I love the idea, too. I think we need to get competitive and make our downtown more vibrant with this, so I think it's a great idea. A couple of questions I had were the Swedish days thing, I guess, I'm not sure, is it about protecting the festival and the chamber and their liquor sales, or is it just about traffic flow on the sidewalks?
Are your question what the restriction currently is on sidewalk cafes?
Or the thought of, well, I guess now we're suggesting allowing it.
Because right now, the restriction is on sidewalk cafes to remove it during Swedish days. We don't know why that was instituted in the first place. I think there's been some change over the years in how Swedish days is operated. I think any outdoor, as Kathleen mentioned, I think everybody's excited to see people out and doing things rather than just making everybody go inside. People really want to be outside, so I don't know that there's a restriction. And again, Kathleen, if you want to chime in.
I don't think, I think it was the idea that the parkways would be too full, but I think that people know how to navigate. All Chocolate Kitchen, I think that they've left theirs out during Swedish days, and we had COVID season during Swedish days, so I think that people, people just know how to navigate around things, and to make them bring it in and out every time there's an event is, we don't, we don't think it's necessary.
I was wondering about outdoor heaters, I guess. I don't know, is that a safety issue? I mean, I feel like, although it's probably more for summertime, there can be chilly evenings where it's still nice to sit outside, but not nice enough to not have a heater or need a coat or something like that.
This goes along with the square tables. It's a space issue. The space available on the public area is so small that if we start adding heaters and they start encroaching then on the area that you need to keep open for pedestrian pathway. So that's really what it's about, that we don't want them setting up their server spot. We don't, we don't want it to look, also, that's usually the front of the building, and you don't want it to start really looking cluttered and junky. You want it to look inviting.
I agree with the server spot and stuff like that, I guess, wouldn't it be up to the business owner? I mean, you can only fit so much in there, whether it's a round table or a space heater or whatever, for them to decide if they want to give up the space and put a space heater in instead, I mean.
And again, we're just making recommendations. Council can make any additions, modifications, subtractions that you see fit.
I'd probably be in favor of letting them have outdoor heaters as long as they were sort of portable, and I don't know what other restrictions might need to go in place, but the ones that you typically see are just roll-in, roll-out with a propane tank on them. It doesn't seem like that big of a deal to me. Is there any thought or was there any discussion about music and how loud music can be played? I'm thinking of one that...
There's already regulations regarding music for liquor license holders, so I don't think that would change.
Because I was, I'm thinking of one instance where there was quite some loud music with like a massive speaker out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I think like during Festival of the Vine, we had some battle of the bands going on.
Yeah.
Is there a particular style of music you'd recommend?
No, it's not about the style. I don't, it was really about the, I mean, you walk by and you can barely keep up a conversation. I mean, it's more about the ambiance than the style or anything like that of the music. It was, you know, seemed a little loud to me at times, so...
So the, because this is an add-on license, again, all of the requirements under their base, I'll call it a base license, are in play. So there are music restrictions and all of that under the regular liquor license. This is just an add-on to allow more space.
Okay. I guess, sort of. I mean, it's, I feel like maybe we could come up with something a little bit more to make sure that ambiance was...
And again, you can...
I don't know what the exact...
You can put whatever restrictions you think you need to have in place.
Maybe, I don't know. I don't know. I would be open to discussing that a little bit further. I guess the thing about round tables and square tables and picnic tables, that also seems maybe a little prescriptive, depending on the space they have. They might have enough space for a picnic table. I'm thinking of in front of the, although that might be private property, but in front of the Copper Fox, they have a couple of tables. I think they would definitely be private, okay. But I guess I was wondering, you see it in Chicago more, I'm thinking, but where they have to, I believe, I assume it's a code, put up a fence, and then all the seating is inside the fence, so that sort of prevents that spillover, I would think, and then whatever they can fit inside the fence.
So that's also one of the recommendations we're making, is not to have a barrier required for the sidewalk cafes, because again, with the limited space, when you start adding fencing or barriers, you are just eating away and eroding at the space that they have. So that's why in our recommendation, you don't see a requirement for barriers.
Okay. And then, I guess, just to, again, I'm very supportive of this, but who takes care of the code enforcement here if we have issues? Does that come down to Mr. Forney?
With liquor licensing, it's typically the police.
Okay.
Or the state can also send their own inspectors.
I mean, I just don't want to overload somebody who's already overloaded with phone calls about spilling over and things like that, but if it was the PD, that seems like that would take care of it pretty quickly.
For the sidewalk cafes without liquor, that would fall to Forney.
Okay.
For sidewalk cafes with liquor, that would fall to our police department.
Okay. And then, just, is there any handicap provisions or anything like that that we need to, I'm sure it's all in the state code, but I was just curious, is there anything that we need to note or share, you know, as we're discussing?
We have in there that they just have to follow all regulations as they may be, so the ADA is a federal regulation, so if there's a requirement there, they would have to follow it, but there's nothing specific in this proposal.
Okay.
Again, it's about access, so making sure you have the access on the pedestrian walkway.
Would this take effect this year or...
That would be our goal.
Yeah.
That's why we're having a special meeting now, because we realize that if we wait and go through the regular cycle, we're going to be to the end of July, and summer's, I hate to say it, but summer's almost over.
All right. Those were all my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this as well. I'll address the two questions that have come up, the heaters, doesn't bother me at all if we allow them, and the shape of the tables doesn't matter as well. The question I had, Kathleen, when you were commenting at the close of Rich's Questions, you had a great comment that this would create a buzz about outdoor dining and we'd be doing what other communities do, which led me to think, then why are we limiting it to keeping it away from the parkways? I thought our reasons to do so were rather weak, and then in further conversation, we talked about the space being too small to have very many tables, so we're already limiting a very limited item. So to me, limiting it to the parkway might not be necessary. I would be more for being all in. It was mentioned to protect the street, the streetscape. I've never walked down a street and said, there are too many outdoor tables and it looks fun, I'm going elsewhere. So I don't think that's a negative, particularly in the summer. So I would like to hear everyone else's opinion as to including the parkways in this idea. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, Mr. Kilburg.
I support this as well, and I have a few questions. I think we covered that. So we have to come for site plan appro, they have to come for site plan approval before they... they can enact this?
Not through the council.
Not through the council, just administrative.
They just have to, they have to, with their application, show exactly where everything's going to go.
Okay. So on the barriers for the sidewalk cafe that's adjacent to the building, I know that most codes require barriers around the seating, but we're going to waive that and not, not have the barrier around the seating if, so if people are kind of standing, milling about, it can become an enforcement problem, I believe? Or is that, is that why there's a code, so that the police have a clear enforcement line?
That is typically why. I did talk to the police. They're, you know, whether the barriers keep people from milling around or not is kind of up for debate. So again, that's an item that the council can choose to keep the code. So if you look at our current liquor code, we do have requirements of how high the fencing has to be. It can be a fence, it can be a natural barrier, it can be all kinds of different types of barriers. But again, that's just an option for the council to determine. We were trying to figure out how to easily streamline it and make sure, you know, to meet, meet the goal, so.
But there's no state statute that requires...
There is no state statute, that is a, that is a local requirement.
Okay. And for, if we were to go in the parkway, would there be a possibility of having barrier then to, because I really don't think you'd have control over that situation if there was people crowding into...
You have full control. So in other words, you can put whatever restrictions, limitations that you want to put.
So if we wanted to say seating within the parkway requires a barrier, we can, and if we want to say there's no barrier required for adjacent to the building itself, we can do that. I think the Swedish Days exemption, I do understand, it gets very hard to move around during Swedish Days. I think that that was probably why it's there, and there's going to be cases where we may regret not making that so again, but probably just on a few days of Swedish Days and not the whole festival. I think that, so if somebody wanted to have outdoor seating within the parkway, is there a way in which they can bring that forward for variance right now? No? So it's just a flat no?
And if we... I'm sorry, I shook my head, so people, Kathleen can't see that. There is no variance, because right now, there's no alcohol allowed on public property.
So is there a way for us to make a convenient variance exception where we could have more review over cafes set up in the parkway versus just adjacent to the building?
So I believe the answer is yes, but I would say with the caveat, when you start creating situations where somebody, you have to have a reason to have a variance. So is it just, it's a variance to be in the parkway, or is it depending upon the size of the parkway? Because then you run into kind of equal treatment of all?
Right.
And so it's kind of a slippery slope when you start saying, well, we want to decide depending upon which parkway it is, or those kinds of things. But again, liquor, the statute gives cities pretty broad leeway in the liquor licensing, and certainly with the liquor commissioner, as long as you're not doing things that are expressly prohibited. So again, you have, so if you want to make the regulations, I think one of the things also that, that was not mentioned in the use of the parkways, if I may, is there's also some concern, because the servers and everybody would have to be crossing the public sidewalk to get to the parkway, so you've got all this traversing, going one direction, and other people going the opposite direction.
Yeah, it happens in Chicago.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm not sure, as far as the insurance requirements go, we would, we would have insurance for the two areas. I'm not sure how you cover that other area. It's kind of a gap there.
Okay, that's complicated. So as to the firming of the parkway that would be necessary to have people kind of trample it and ruin the roots, the soil there, could we make that structural change, the responsibility of a business owner to pay for and get approved by?
Yes.
Building Department? Okay. And we could require that they maintain a permeability that's similar to what's there now, so that we don't kill all the trees?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think sidewalk cafes are great. I don't think dead trees are great, so I hope that we do all the right things to make sure that the natural part of Third Street can survive, and hopefully it works out great.
Mr. Kilburg, sir?
As I think about this, it must have been six or eight years ago when we, we started outside dining.
That's right. I was waiting for someone to bring that discussion up.
I know that the barriers were very controversial, and I know that we had several businesses that came and voiced their objections about the barriers and the height of the barriers and how the barriers should appear, and that went on for a few months. And I guess my question is, if I was a policeman and I had to try to enforce this, it would present some challenges. And I think if you looked at some of our businesses, like for instance, the Noble House, or if you look at Stock Homes, and you put a couple of tables out there, okay, you have a server, brings out four glasses of beer, okay? The server goes back inside, and you've got four beers out there with adults, but all of a sudden, they see somebody a half a block down the street, and they start walking down the sidewalk with their beer. Now, is that a violation? It's a violation. Now, I would think as a business owner, it would be pretty difficult to, to enforce or control that, because their help is on the inside, taking care of probably 75% of their customers indoors, they've got a few customers outside. And not that this is going to be a problem, but I'm just saying, trying to look at it from enforcement element, I think that it does present some challenges. And, you know, somebody's going to go unlock their car or go to their trunk, and they got their beer in their hand, and all of a sudden, they're in the street. I think the fences served an important role in controlling it, you know? I think that it, it created a real barrier and not an artificial barrier as to where you could stray with your liquor. And again, I'm not necessarily against this, but I'm just saying that I think that we're ma, you know, we're moving in a direction here where it could present more enforcement issues for our police departments, and it puts the businesses, I think, that would want to do this in somewhat more of a compromising position that we need to think about. And it's, you know, and the other thing is, is now those businesses like Fiora's that has, they put up a fence to surround their courtyard, they might say now, can I take my fence, fencing down? I would think that technically they could say, well, you know, they'd have an argument that it wouldn't really be necessary anymore, because you have actually alcohol on the, on the public, public property. Why is the fence necessary? Maybe you could address, it looks like you had an answer for that.
No, I was just going to say, the way it stands right now, because it's in the code that they are required to have fencing, they would not be able to do that. If the council so desired to remove all fencing requirements from all, then they could. But at this point, the way the code is written, they would still be required to have their fencing.
I think if you ask those businesses today if they'd want to have those fences taken down, I think they would say no. That's just my guess. But anyhow, that's all I had.
Mr. Caven, then Ms. Berghart? Did I say Beer? And then Bruno. Sorry, Mike?
Thank you. I think Alderman Kilburg makes some good points about the fence, but I don't think that we need to have a fencing requirement in there for the sidewalk cafes. You, you, okay, I just, I think you pointed some several things out, but if somebody wanted to put one of those sidewalk, sidewalk cafes up, and, and they thought that it was a better idea for them, for some of the reasons that you detailed, they would still have the option to be able to put that up, they're just not required to put it up. So I think those individual businesses can make those decisions about what works best for them. And you know, you're right, it is easier for somebody to walk off with a beverage or anything like that, but, you know, part of that falls on that business owner to make sure that that doesn't happen as well, because that's their liquor license. So if somebody walks down the street, that's not a positive thing for them, because they could wind up with a ticket. So whatever they feel, I, I think, whatever they feel would be best for their own business, I think they would be allowed to do. So I don't, I don't think it needs to be necessarily a requirement, and I'm not saying that's what you're indicating, I just, that, that's my thought.
And I might interject here. Are we saying then that actually you could fence those on public property? You can fence them?
Yes, we're saying that there's not a requirement to fence it.
But they could?
They could.
Is there going to be enough room for that?
Well, that would be the question.
Not meet the ADA.
Thank you. So I think there is that, and then Alderman Kilburg also kind of mentioned, you know, a place that already has an outdoor patio. Somebody who has an outdoor beer garden or patio currently, I realize that that's on their private property, how much do they pay annual for the portion of the permit to be able to operate that set structure?
It's $200.
Okay, it's $200?
In addition to whatever their liquor licenses.
Yep, understood. So is that what the cost of the permit would be for somebody looking for the temporary sidewalk cafe as well?
That's what we were proposing, but again, that can be set by council. We were proposing just an outdoor license is $200 regardless, public, private, or even if you're a business that has a private patio and you want to add public seating on the front, it would still be the flat 200.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that that's, I think that that's fair. I mean, I guess some of the thought that I have, and again, I think that this is a, I think that this is a good idea, but, you know, for places who invested a substantial amount of money to put patios and outdoor seating areas in, that was a, that was a large expense and a cost to those business owners. Now, I also realize that some other, depending upon what your building is, you may not even have the option to be able to spend that money to put those up. So I think that this is a reasonable compromise, and also, most of those patios that we see, a lot of them are pretty good sized, where what we're talking about is, you know, a couple of double tables, so it's not, it's not really the same as somebody who's got a 20-seat outdoor seating area, as somebody who's going to have the opportunity to have three or four tables out front, just to have that option, because they don't have anything else. So, yeah, I, I think that this is a, I think that this is a worthwhile amendment, but I would like to try to keep it to where there's not too much, I don't want to say overregulation, but same as like with the fence, I think those business owners can make that. Obviously, it has to be specific enough to make sure that it can be enforced if there was issues or anything like that. I'm, I'm not indicating that, but I, I think that it's a good idea. So, thank you.
Ms. Berghart, then Mr. Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm in favor of this in general. Couple of questions, I think we've asked this a few times, but I keep, I'm struggling with it. Would this be a limited geographic area? Or do we think it just really only applies to these ones we're talking on state?
Correct. We, Kathleen had her staff go through and kind of look at the GIS maps, and so this is where we think, we've identified where we think they can go. That doesn't mean that there aren't places we have not thought of, so the...
If a restaurant opened on East State Street and had a sidewalk.
Yeah, the restriction is, is literally just has to do, because it's tied to your liquor license or not having a liquor license, but beyond that, it could go wherever there is public property that, that it looks like it would work adjacent to the building.
Okay, that's good. That's what I wanted to hear, just in case there is development down the road or something we're not thinking of. And then, this, it sounds like this would not impact at all the few restaurants or cafes that are already doing this already without any liquor.
That's correct.
Does it make sense, though, while we're doing this, to clean up that language? Do we, or do we feel like it's working fine? It, it felt like that 1995 code is a little messy in that it says like, tables, picnic tables, anything that's kind of an outdoor cafe.
Yeah, we would, we would clean, clean it up. I think anytime that we touch a chapter in the city code, it makes sense to look at that chapter and, and clean up. I will say, although the current sidewalk cafes aren't under the liquor licensing, they're under a different part of the code, but we've identified some things that could be cleaned up.
I just was, it seems like it's working fine for them now, but it, you know, I guess, while, while we're on the subject. Okay, a couple of few things. I, I mean, I'm in favor of the saying rectangle ta, rectangular tables, because I think it is the best use of space against a, a flat building, and, I mean, we're not telling them what color they have to be, or what material they have to be made out of, we're just saying they have to be, I assume we'd say whatever size, or a two-top, so only, you know, this size or smaller, but I think that doesn't seem too odious to me. Heaters, I mean, I'd prefer to say no heaters, because I'd rather maximize the space for the tables and people, and I think heaters, when you're talking about heaters, you're talking into more of these private spaces that are serving a much bigger group of people. I mean, honestly, I wish we could do like a walking tour for this meeting, because I think all of us are struggling with, I mean, this is pretty limited space for most of these, this is a couple, couple of tables. So I don't, you know, there, it's not like they're going to create a whole another, like, beer garden out on the sidewalk. I mean, if other people feel strongly about the heaters, I just feel like they get a little cluttery and stuff. Music outdoors, I mean, I'm open to talking that, about that. We've certainly, Mike and I've had an issue with one restaurant, although that's been calmed down. But I don't think this is the place to do it, because so much of the music we're talking about is on private space, so it wouldn't, it doesn't fall under this. And I know we have a sound ordinance, but we really have a sound ordinance, which is about, like, how early I can get my jackhammer out, or how early I can, we don't really have a music ordinance or like, you know, sustained, that, that, so I do think we would be okay to talk about that eventually, but I'm in favor of the, no, not requiring any fence, again, clutter, and just a lot of, a lot of work to figure out restrictions for that. The parkway, I mean, I am all in favor of getting more outdoor dining, and I look to our neighbor to the north and see how much, you know, that they, their, how many outdoor dining spots they have. But it is a lot more complicated, the parkway. I mean, talking about the traffic, talking about, I mean, if we did something with the parkway, I'd want to see uniformity with the parkways. I wouldn't want this one using brown mulch and this one using paver patios, you know? I, I think, you know, we were pretty relaxed during COVID, but I, I think you'd want to see some uniform, you know, uniformity about it, and I am worried about trees. And I wonder how you figure out which restaurant gets the parkway that's in front of their, you know, who, who, who gets the dibs on it? I guess as a, you know, we open up, we open up an application at 6:00 AM on, you know, May 2nd and see who's, who's in line or something. I, I mean, I want to be in favor of it, I just, it's, it's, that one's harder for me, I guess. And then, I mean, I wonder, do we think about this? Do we put, do this as like a two-year test or something, and, you know, what we're talking about with the, with the sidewalks and the, on the liquor sales and, and stuff, and say we come back in two years and see if it, you know, if it needs some improvements around the edges, or if, you know, there's something else to be done with it? I, I mean, I think a lot of, I think almost all the restaurants that can take advantage of this will, they'll probably have a couple of little tables out there, but it's not going to be the game changer that I think a lot of us would like to see. So those are my, my random thoughts, so, no, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Bruno, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. All, all good points made, most of, most of my points have already been made. Do we have a means of documenting whether we have an, an upsurge in, in enforcement problems? Is it just the police getting reports and reporting back to us that, you know, this has become kind of a nightmare with beers walking down the street? I'll let Stephanie answer that if she's got an idea.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Do we have a means of, so as Alderman Kilburg said, so if there's no barriers, someone walks down the street to greet a friend or go get something out of their car with their beer, you know, how is it that we can determine in a year or two whether this has just created problems? problems?
I guess the only way we would know is if there are complaints filed or if the officer happens to be walking down the street and sees somebody with an open container, there's a violation. So there would be a record of that. But as far as beyond that, I don't, I don't know that you would have a mechanism.
Okay. The, well, I'm, I'm certainly for giving those zero setback merchants some, some opportunity for some outdoor space. I'm, I was a little surprised that this is within our purview to be able to do this. I, I thought that would be a non-home rule, no, no, to not have barriers around it. And, and I think given the, the sliver of land that we're talking about in some of these cases, putting a fence would probably make that space unusable. You wouldn't be able to even get into it. So I'm, I'm okay at this point with, with no barriers, with the outdoor tables. I'm neither here nor there on heaters. I know I like to sit outside under a heater when, when I need to, but maybe not the best look, but I'm neither here nor there on that. On the parkways, on the other hand, as other people have said, you know, during COVID, I was, I'd let them do anything they want anytime they want. If we're going to institutionalize the ability to utilize the parkways, it concerns me that the, the long-term character of, of downtown. I mean, some, some businesses did a nice job with their parkways, some were kind of tacky, you know. I don't think fiberglass tents are, are a great look for downtown. You know, I, I guess I could be persuaded if we had some kind of standardized look and feel, landscape maintenance, permeability. But I, I think as, as we wade into this, I'm probably leaning on not doing that at this point. So I'd, I'd probably hold off on the parkways myself. Let's see. That's good. Everyone else ask my questions. Thanks.
Just for, just for the record, which one of the six Brunos was that? There were six of you on screen at one time.
I know. From my end, it's really cool. When I move, it kind of goes down the line. Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
Cool.
Actually-
It's like MTV.
I do this.
Mr. Kilburg, sir?
Yeah. Could Stephanie or Kathleen explain Burger Locos situation there? Is, is that on private property or is that on public property?
No, that's on private property. Several years ago, we, I think it was a property transfer that we actually did.
Okay.
And so they actually own that sidewalk.
Okay, okay. Because there's enough space there to, to really accommodate that type of outside dining. I think that's an ideal situation. And I, I, I'm all for that. I just think some of the, the width of the sidewalks on State Street, I think are going to present some challenges.
Well, I think we saw during COVID, Nobel House had, had tables and chairs. Another business that has, is interested in this is the Beer Cellar.
Yeah.
They had like two tables out front.
Yeah.
Just again, some of them just want one or two tables, just because it draws people in. So I think on State Street, you have a little wider sidewalk too because you have that ribbon. So the public part tends to be from the building to the ribbon. So.
Dean, your microphone, sir?
I guess the, the business owner is going to have to make a decision whether this is worth it. And again, I mean, if, if 85% of your clientele is inside and you've got 5% or 10% on the outside of the business at a couple of tables, it may not be worth the investment for the license and you may not generate enough revenue to make it worthwhile. And if they have an incident or two, they might just say this isn't worth it. So, I mean, it's, I guess we could give it a shot. I just have some concerns. Thanks.
Ms. Mayor and Mr. Merks?
Yeah, I've just been listening and thinking through the parkway issue. And I'm, I'm not supportive of moving forward tonight with that. I think that staff would need to come back with more focus on that instead of the sidewalk cafe, which I think is no problem at all. And I support.
And I think that's what Kathleen alluded to. If you recall in her slide, we did apply for a grant to help us look at when we read, it's been 20 years. When we look at redoing Third Street, what does it look like? And maybe that's when we start looking at what would it look like to have dining in the parkways versus what we have currently. So that was one of our thoughts is let's, let's start with the kind of basic sidewalk cafe license, see how it works, see how it's received, and then maybe for future, we can look at expanding that.
Mr. Merks?
Pretty much what I was going to say, I think, I think we're all in favor pretty much of the, of the sidewalk cafe. But I think the parkway does require a little bit more study because also what I would like to see there is some type of an easement to make sure, you know, people can open their doors to get their children out of the cars and stuff and that. And I don't know how narrow that's going to make that.
That would be the takeout license that-
That's the takeout, okay.
It's like a car hop.
But, but I do like Alderman Burghart's idea of maybe sunsetting it with us to at least tweak it and, and examine it in a couple of years, just to make sure that if we do see some issues that we can, we have that option just to-
So you always have the option to make changes. What I would recommend there is obviously rather than write it into the code, I would just make sure that we have it kind of on our file that on, in two years, we're going to revisit this. Because that way, if things are working, you don't have to do a whole bunch. It just continues. If you just need a tweak, you bring forward an amendment to the ordinance.
I, I, I think to move this quickly, I think we go with the sidewalk cafe and let the parkway work out for a few more years to get that down right. That's just my opinion, but that, that's where I stand.
Kathleen, I invite you to comment on or add anything you'd like prior to asking the committee if we have consensus to move forward.
I have no other comments. Thank you for the discussion and the input. Appreciate.
Yes.
I just need a little, so I, I've heard that for the most part, there's consensus not to go with the parkway at this juncture. I'm, I'm still sensing kind of, crack myself up. You know what I'm going to say, don't you? That we're on the fence about barriers. But, but what we can do-
Are there folks on the dais right now who strongly feel that a fence requirement is essential in the language of a draft ordinance? There's your consensus.
Okay.
Make a change, of course, when we discuss it.
So Kathleen, I, I'm not sure if we will have an ordinance by Monday, but I think that was part of our goal is to work. But I, Kathleen, I don't know, what was our timeline?
We were hoping to get this on the next agenda, Cal.
Yeah.
Which is, of course, the last-
Well, well, how-
The 21st is the first day.
And we have, if we get it on the agenda for the 20th.
Right.
Let's, again, assuming everybody liked what they saw, we could enact it at a special meeting on the 27th because we are meeting on the 27th.
Correct.
So there is that possibility to get it before July. Maybe not, obviously before Swedish days, but before July. Because again, our goal is to try to get this going while we still have warm weather.
Swedish days is a preemption anyhow. So, Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah. You may recognize Michael, but maybe you'd have a comment or two in regard to this?
With the statement that I'm, I'm here for the next topic.
Okay.
I'm just very grateful and impressed that all you folks-
Since you live in these areas, maybe.
No, I just impressed that all of you folks are so cognizant of- Oh, sorry.
Sorry, nobody can hear.
Okay. Do I have to turn something on?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. I, I, I'm here for the next topic, but I'm just so impressed to see how all of you folks are so cognizant of the positive impact this is going to have on the downtown. And I appreciate Kathleen bringing it up and all the comments because as she mentioned and some of you guys echoed, the more buzz we can create, the more active downtown Geneva is, the more successful we all are.
Thank you, Mike.
Quick question?
Go ahead. No, you go first because you got-
Dean, anything else?
No.
Mr. Kocerog?
I was wondering if you could just comment on the parkway, what you think about that, Mike? And-
You know, I, I tend to think that Bob's comment, that he's never going to leave a downtown because somebody's going to say, oh, there's stuff going on in the parkway. It just adds to more buzz. So yeah, there need to be regulations, but the more people who have an occasion to eat downtown outside, the better for all of us.
Okay.
Ms. Berger?
Yeah, in the interest of moving this along too for this month, I wondered, should we also ask if there's any strong feelings about heaters and the rectangle, rectangle, you know, two tops? Just, I would hate for-
Oh, sure.
I would hate for it to come back and then-
No, we'll take whatever feedback you want to give us.
Yeah, whatever feedback you want, chime in.
I was the only one who really was like, or I said no to heaters, but I don't know if anybody else agrees with me.
I don't think heaters are necessary at summer. If it's a chilly night, grab a sweater. They can put a candle on the table.
And theoretically speaking, there is not a, a seasonal end date to this ordinance. So if it's balmy and lovely out on the, on, let's, you know, Black Wednesday, for example, the night before Thanksgiving, and I want to throw some two tops out there, I can do that.
Yeah, I, I think Kathleen said something about a December date, but I don't personally, I think we still need to talk through that because, again, there may be a beautiful day in February we've had. So, you know, the heaters, I think the other concern with heaters is we had some issues during COVID with people putting heaters where they shouldn't put heaters, storing heaters where they shouldn't store heaters or storing the propane. So it just became, again, more, more enforcement. If it, if it's clean tables and chairs, it's easy to walk by and see tables and chairs.
And from an environmental standpoint, I prefer no heaters. Just be tough.
Is there anyone who strongly supports adding the heater element into the ordinance, draft ordinance?
No pun intended either.
Pardon me?
No pun intended.
I, I didn't want to say that. Yes, yes. Does anybody coil at the thought?
I might be full of gas, but I, I would say I think we should-
Is there a second to that statement?
I think we should have not restrict heaters. I really do. I think it's unnecessary part of the provision.
Regrettably, you're in the minority.
Sounds like it, but at least I've voiced my opinion.
Absolutely. Oghacious one.
Okay, we need to move on.
Okay, sorry. Okay, we have consensus. Kathleen, thank you very much.
Same on, I think same on the shape of the tables. Let's get it hashed out here. I mean, does, you know, I think the rectangular is the smart way to go, but-
Or square or rectangular?
Square, I don't know. Whatever, we're, two, two tops.
A square, two tops.
90-degree angles, but-
I, I think it's an unnecessary restriction. And given what Dean said, that people have to evaluate whether the cost benefit to have them go out and buy square tables if they don't have them for this, to comply with this rule. If they can fit it with circular tables or oblong or who knows, why, why have more regulations? It's just one more thing.
We'd have to have a, there'd have to be a square foot, something or-
Well, I guess then that's the question. Rather than rectangular, circle, or whatever, do we just say it's a two-top table?
Well, you have the four-foot requirement. That's your stakes.
Right. In other words, it's a two, two-person table, though. And then they can put as many as they can fit or as few, but then you at least have that.
Is it a low-top or a high?
I don't think that matters.
I don't care.
We don't care about height.
I don't care what shape it is.
Do we care about size, though? I mean, or?
I care about size. I want it to be a-
So if we say a two, two-person-
Yep.
-table. Okay. And keep in mind, when we bring the draft ordinance forward next week, you can, you can make amendments or make a motion to make an amendment and, and see where it goes from there.
And to Ms. Burghart's comment about a walking tour, next week, we will be meeting at two-top tables to discuss half-round, half-square.
I, I just am curious. Does it matter if, if it's a two-top, as long as it fits within the designated space? I mean, if, if they, if they have a table already that they want to put out there and it's not a two-top, I, I don't think we should make them mine.
Again, we're going to, we'll bring back the draft. And then if, if you don't like the draft, then I think the appropriate point at that time is to make the motion to, to see if there's consensus rather than, because I, I do, I mean, I think there is a concern with a bigger table means more people, which means more encroachment, because they look at the table and not necessarily the chair and where the people are sitting.
Unless you do like a picnic table, then you can't move the seating. I, I don't know. I would like to leave that up to the business owners to decide what they think fits their needs the best.
I do have a consensus.
We just don't want any big tables. We're putting on one, yes.
It's a big table.
Kathleen, did you have a comment? Kathleen?
I, I would just like to comment that that recommendation is coming from the experience that we had for two years. Because we didn't have to manage, you know, some conflicts and issues. And the issues did seem to revolve around places that could not put the tables flat up to the building because of the, you know, the trickling into that area. So it's just coming from the experience of having this situation for two years that we did have prior. So that's where it's coming from. We're not trying to be more restrictive. We're just sort of lessons learned more or less.
So we could design, or excuse me, we could decide on the 20th whether it's shape or otherwise and-
I was just going to ask one question.
Sure.
She kind of answered it, but is it the square, the heaters? Is any of this not just from experience but from other cities and other codes that are written? So this isn't just random, like for Geneva?
Correct.
This, this has been seen and demonstrated in other places?
We researched, and I say we, mostly Kathleen and her staff researched a bunch of non-home rule communities to see how they managed this. And we tried to pick what we felt seemed to make the most sense for our community.
So you saw square required? You saw no heaters required and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we saw some very restrictive and we saw some not as restrictive. But I think it also depends on the environment because different communities have, don't, maybe don't have the quaint downtown that we have. It might be more urban, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anyone else? Kathleen, again, thank you on this topic. And you're going to stick around for the next one? Stephanie, you're clear to move? Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Kathleen, it would be great if you could ask for feedback from the business owners who do participate. If we could just get some, like a little casual report, just of everyone who tried it and just how, how, if they found it successful. And ask for feedback about, you know, what they might like to see different, you know, just to, just to guide us.
And I'm not saying that's not a, a good idea, but if we're going to get this for Monday, we have to have the ordinance ready by Wednesday.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I wasn't suggesting that for the ordinance.
Okay, I was, I thought you wanted all of that before we brought it back on Monday.
No, sorry, sorry. Not for the ordinance, but I just think that would be really beneficial feedback for, for us, moving forward, to fine tune it if, if needed. And, and just, I would love to hear if it's successful, if our business owners are, are happy and pleased with us. I would love that feedback.
I know Malone Funeral Home loves having those cafe tables out there. Brings the people. Okay, moving on to item B as in boy. Discussion regarding downtown parking space licensing agreements. Kathleen, do you have any preamble you want to offer on this?
Hold on.
No, just waiting for the-
Just waiting for the document to be uploaded?
Okay.
Here we go. Okay, Kathleen, floor is yours.
Okay, part two. So the part two is licensing public parking spaces. So, let me just- So everybody knows downtown parking is free and, yeah, it's time restricted. So generally, parking is set up so that near to the shops and the restaurants, there's time limits so that there can be turnover, so that parking looks available and that it moves quickly. So spaces further out are unrestricted for extended use for customers to park who are going to spend the entire day, employees, office workers who may be there all day long, and some of the retail and restaurant workers who have longer shifts. So right now, we have a downtown merchant, I guess, you could guess who in the, in the, in the audience, is working to create more experiential shopping experiences in the store. And these are longer periods of time. And so he's requesting a waiver of some- And these are longer periods of time, and so he's requesting a waiver of some of the on-street restrictions to support this endeavor. So let's detail this a little bit more. So Little Traveler is creating a series of programs to attract and entertain, and typically the programs, you know, may include a meal at the store, an event, like a lecture, or some type of activity at St. Mark's, and then a shopping coupon for people to continue to enjoy their day and bring home something special. So the owner is requesting that the city remove the parking restrictions for those spaces that are outside of the store in close proximity to the church and the store. So city staff, you know, we've suggested, and we've talked about how, you know, perhaps the patrons and the people who are attending these could be directed to some of the untimed parking alternatives, including the French Market Lot, which does not have time restrictions, and/or the parking garage, which is, there's spaces available. We went out and looked, and there are spaces available there. And, you know, Mike has represented that these options really don't meet the need, and that the scheduled programs, you know, they really can't move forward without the requested consideration. So he'll speak to that more about some of the mindset there. But, you know, these events are something that are desired, you know, it is good to bring groups of people to Geneva who are interested in the topic, and then, you know, enjoy the Little Traveler, and maybe other places that day, or another day that they return. So we've tried to work to come up with a solution to the issue, and to be able to encourage and support this endeavor. So the first thing, you know, we took a look at the special events, and we thought, you know, could this be managed like a special event? There's about 12 events that are scheduled between July and December, could these be special events? And they really don't meet the definition of special events, because they, you know, we do have specifics for what those are, and this is really a single-store event that, you know, single-store events happen regularly, and they don't require any approval from the city. We want merchants and stores and businesses to create these opportunities, without city regulation. But unfortunately, the city code also does not provide staff discretion to make these tweaks in the timed parking. So we did, you know, take a look at, I thought process went to like French Market lease, license, excuse me, license, and also there used to be a license program that the city ran for restrooms. So we did take a look, and the state statute does allow the city to license public property, specifically parking spaces, as long as compensation is provided, due compensation. So we have put together some bones for a potential license agreement with Little Traveler. The spaces that have been identified as desired, they count up to about 59 spaces. They're on Fulton and Fourth. The spaces would not be reserved or exclusive. The events start early, so it's likely that people would be able to find room there, but if there were someone else parking there, that would be, that would not be an issue. Like I said, there's about 12 events, beginning in July, going out to November, and the idea would be that as part of the license, the owner would supply, you know, placards for display of windshield to the people who sign up for the events. The events have pre-signups, so that's something that their staff could manage and work with the attendees. We would need insurance, like we do anytime somebody has some type of special accommodation with the city, just to make sure that if something happened, you know, that space would be, that insurance would be covered. And then we are putting out there that the cost for the license, as we need due compensation, could be equal to the cost of the daily parking in the garage, which is $1.75, and then we would multiply that out by the number of spaces we actually decided on, the number of events. And this is actually probably less than having to pay for tickets, which is what the other option that Little Traveler is thinking about doing. So this would be a more proactive instead of a reactive, also wouldn't leave people with that feeling of getting a ticket, that's never fun. So our question for discussion would be, should the city license the on-street public parking spaces for single-business special events? There's definitely pro and con, split sides. In the affirmative, if you decide in the affirmative, we should be cognizant of the fact that this will set a precedent, and other requests may follow. You know, we have a banquet facility on Third Street that could potentially then look to this type of option. So if we do this, are there other minimums or use parameters that should be created? And then should we proceed with bringing this license agreement forward at the next meeting? And then if we did not think that this was a good idea for the city, are there other solutions that you would like us to start to research? Is it time to start revisiting the parking regulations downtown? You know, the parking regulations downtown were put in a few years ago by consensus of a parking committee that really worked to try to create all those balances between, you know, deterring the commuter from parking there, and also, you know, deterring employees from parking, and trying to create that open parking space for people to feel welcome to come and shop. So that was all put into place at a time, a moment in time. Is that moment in time ripe for reconsideration, given especially the retailers are looking to try to create more experiences? You know, should we even start to consider paid parking options downtown? Nobody wants to be parking meters, and, you know, technology, though, has advanced where, you know, you could pay for short periods of time on the phone, and then this would help businesses kind of buy out parking if they needed it. So those are just some of our thoughts about this topic, and we're interested in receiving your direction.
Thank you, Kathleen. Stephanie, anything you want to add prior to discussion? Mr. Simon, do you want to add anything to what Kathleen's provided?
Yeah, thanks.
Of course.
We've been doing special events at The Traveler for probably 20 years, and we've certainly ramped it up since COVID, and since it's our 100th anniversary, we're doing a lot more, and we're having a lot of fun with it. And as Kathleen pointed out, the term we use is experiential shopping. Because of COVID, people are doing a lot more shopping online, we all know that. So to get them to come into our store, we have to entice them with other things, and hopefully they're going to spend some money if they're enticed correctly. So in our case, we're doing a number of programs where they come into the store at 9:00 for breakfast, they'll go over to St. Mark's at 10:00 for a program, they get a shopping coupon, they'll come back at 11:30 and shop, and then hopefully go somewhere else in Geneva for lunch afterwards. Up until now, it's been a pretty simple process. We've always had an agreement with the police department where they've just said, no problem the day before your event, just call us, and we'll just tell the parking control officer not to do your block that morning, because the parking control officer doesn't do the entire city every day. So he was just instructed to skip the block, Fulton between Third and Fourth, and then the two blocks of Fourth between South and Franklin? Which is where our customers park, and the St. Mark's Lot. This year, the police department decided that wasn't workable for us, for them, so that's why this is coming up. We're happy to continue doing it the way it's been done. It's been simple and pretty effortless. From our perspective, the more things we put into place to formalize it, the more complicated it gets, and we're trying to make it uncomplicated for our customers. You know, Kathleen had suggested the South Street Lot, which technically makes sense, but knowing our customers, our average age of the people who are coming to these events is probably 70, and they don't like the idea of having to walk, even though you're saying you're just going a block. So chances are, what they'll do is they'll still park in front of the store and risk getting a ticket, and if they do get a ticket, then they probably will either come to us and I'll pay it, or they'll just go home and kind of fume and maybe not come to the next one. So we want them to be able to park as closely as possible, and they're doing that at a time when there isn't anything going on for the most part, because 9:00 in the morning, nobody else is there for the most part. So it's bringing customers into the downtown, it's bringing customers into our store, it's kind of a win-win, because we're able to have them have breakfast with us, we're able to have them buy a program, and we're able to have them shop, and it's become, it's having a big impact on our outbound line. And we want to continue doing it and ramping it up, because it's one of the things that has kept the store around for 100 years and makes us unique. So we want to stay ahead of the curve and keep on doing innovative things.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
From the DAS, comments, questions for either Kathleen, Stephanie, or Mr. Simon? Mr. Kilburg?
Just one quick one. These are mostly through the week, Mondays through Fridays?
Yeah.
That's all.
Mr. Swanson, Ms. Mayor, and I, Mr. Bruno, then you're, got it.
Oh, sorry.
Swanson, Mayor, Bruno.
This question is for Kathleen or Stephanie, and that is, what is the utilization of those 59 spots on a regular basis? Who are we transferring elsewhere on these days? Do we know? And if so, where are they going?
I don't know that we have that information, Kathleen.
I couldn't completely hear the question.
The question was, if we're talking about 59 spots at Franklin and Fourth Street, if those spots are reserved, where do those potential parkers go other than that location? Are we displacing those who would normally park there? If so, where are they going to park?
So the idea is not to reserve the spaces, just to make them available without time limit. So if the spaces are available when the attendees arrive, they can park there. If they're not available, then they'll have to find other parking. As far as displacing other people, they would, you know, if you parked somewhere every day, you would just find a different space. Right now, those are time-restricted spaces, so you would probably find another time-restricted place in the close proximity.
Does that answer your question, Bob?
It does. And what is our fine for a violation, for say, a first, second, or third violation? It was my understanding that...
First is a warning.
And the second is a warning.
Second might be a warning.
Okay.
I think there might be flowers in there, but no, I'm just kidding.
So my point is, unless the customers are coming time and time again, they probably are not going to be out significant dollars. I guess there's the aggravation of getting something on...
And a lot of people come to me and say, I got a ticket. And I'll say, did you look at it? No, but I got a ticket. And I'll point out to them it's a warning, and they'll backtrack a little bit, and then they'll say, but I still got a ticket, why do they do that to me? You know, it's psychological.
Sure, okay. So I get that, my concern is that we have 59 spots that are being, someone is being moved elsewhere if there are multiple people taking these spots. Perhaps they're going to the parking garage or to the South Street Station, which is fine, but, so, I'm all for experiential events, and I think we need a full examination of our downtown parking, what the limits are, and where, and why. This one is complicated. I guess I like to see doing more events, particularly this one, where you're involving many other aspects and other entities in Geneva, and I think that's a positive as well, so I see the complications, but I like moving forward with the licensing agreement. Thank you.
You are in support of the licensing agreement?
I am.
Okay, got it. Let's see, forgive me, after Mr. Swanson was Mr. Bruno?
Sorry, Mayor.
Did I skip you?
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor, then Mr. Bruno.
I support this. I think it's pretty simple and elegant, and, you know, won't cause a lot of problems because it is just extending the time, it's not actually granting access or exclusivity to those spots, so I'm definitely on board with this.
Mr. Bruno, sir. Oh, God, six more.
Thank you, Mayor. It's like a bad Star Wars movie, look at this. Anyway, the, I hate parking issues here. Every time we open this up, it ends up satisfying one thing for a while, and then someone else dislikes it. But, so, I might have missed something in the slideshow. We're looking at an option of just lifting time limits and done and done, or a, some type of paying for those spots. Is that fairly stated?
No. And Kathleen can clarify as well, but we're looking at creating an agreement with The Little Traveler for those spaces, but it would be a non-exclusive agreement. We're not talking about just waiving time limits in general, but for the spaces identified, we would be for that date, or those dates.
Okay. And I have a little...
And if I may, real quick, I do have the other answer. So the first and second violations are a written warning, the third violation is $5, the fourth and fifth violations are $10, violations six through 10 are $20, and those are typically, I think they keep track on an annual basis.
Yes, that's true.
So...
For those, the veterans of the council, will recall vividly...
Twenty-five are for other types of parking violations, but for overtime parking, meaning exceeding the time limit, that's what this schedule is.
Are you comfortable in writing those checks, Ms. Mayor?
Yes, I've been at every level of that.
If I were you, I'd sign up for one of Mr. Simon's events, you don't have to worry about that.
You know, Mr. Mayor, before we go on, one thought that just occurred to me that we never talked about, that could be a real simple fix for this, until everybody has a chance to do a comprehensive overview, is if we change the three-hour limit now to four hours, that would take care of 90% to 95% of these, because that would give people a chance to go to the program, have lunch, and probably shop. If they get there at 9:00, virtually everybody's gone by 1:00. About half of them are gone by noon, and it's that other half that we're trying to solve. So if we could just paste a four over the threes for the time being, that would probably solve everything, and we wouldn't have to do anything else.
Mr. Bruno, anything else, sir?
Yeah, yeah, so, let's, so I'm just trying to play out a hypothetical here, so if the Cubs are in the World Series and they're playing downtown, and, you know, The Little Traveler for this date has these spaces secured, how are they secured such that commuters or sports commuters won't sit there, go downtown, and leave their car there all day?
Under this proposal, they're not.
They get a hang of it.
They get a, the, once they park there, they get to stay there, but the space would have to be available when they get there.
Right, so if they, if they're taking the train before Little Traveler event, they don't have any spaces.
They're taking the train for a Little Traveler event, they don't have a car.
No, no, they're taking the train into Chicago to see the Cubs...
Oh.
Early, before the Little Traveler event, so...
Correct.
Assume that.
The placard.
Nothing's going to satisfy everybody. I'll see what consensus is at the end here. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Berger?
Thank you. Mike, thanks for being here tonight. Like, how many people come to, you know, one of these events, is it like 50, 30?
Between 60 and 100.
Okay. And you would give them a placard, or once they signed up to come to, say, the July event?
The idea that we bounced around was, when they get their tickets, depending on how many tickets they bought, we would include a placard for that many people. Now, that wouldn't be that many spaces, because parties of four oftentimes come in one car.
Ah, right, right, okay. Ah, right, right, okay. So these 59 spots might-
No, it's not, it's not going to be 59 spots.
And the 59 spots we're talking about are feasible, or if you count up every spot within this geographic area, right?
Exactly.
And then is the St. Mark's lot, is that a time-constrained one already?
It's a three-hour lot.
Did we discuss, like, using the same, or using that as the designated, or are you always working with St. Mark's, or could it be other organizations? I was trying to think.
It's usually St. Mark's. But that's more of a Kathleen question, because she works with the police, not enforcement there.
I just thought, was there a way to say that, you know, to tell these people, like, you use the St. Mark's lot, and you get this placard, and-
Uh-huh. Yeah, that would be ideal.
But that would be included in this. That's an option. The St. Mark's lot would be an option.
Kathleen, do you want to comment on that?
It's related to the question that Alderman Swanson asked earlier. The St. Mark's lot is used regularly by several other businesses that are adjacent. So that really would be more displacing than this proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'd rather, so the vision would be, I buy tickets, I get my placard, and I get instructions, like, use this placard, and you can park anywhere on these streets-
Yeah.
And come enjoy our program, and the police would know, I'm not going to give a ticket, because this, and then based on how many placards you give out, is you're going to pay, you'll be paying this, the rate of what it would, $1.75 or whatever it would be.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we would do that. And honestly, I wasn't aware of the $1.75 until tonight. I thought it was just a placard thing, but we'll have to work out, if that's the consensus you folks come to, how we're going to do that, because we don't know how many people are going to be in a car. So 60 people might be 15 cars.
And we, I mean, we all laugh at our ticket fees and stuff, but, you know, my mother-in-law's 72 and a very with-it lady and everything, but I think about mobility issues with her, and I also think about, she's a rule follower. She doesn't want to get a ticket. A ticket would worry her. Does she need to pay the ticket? Or does she go, you know, and you would hate for her not to come back the next month, because the parking stresses her out. So, so I like this, I do like this approach. I appreciate a lot of thought went into it. It probably is time for us as a council to talk about parking in the macro sense. I mean, the world has changed so much with, obviously, I'd be interested, the fact that there's even spots available in the parking garage. I mean, when I was commuting downtown, you couldn't, if you were after 7:00 AM, there were no spots in the lot even as soon as it opened. So I will say, I think our parking situation is pretty good. I was on vacation last week in someplace where I was doing the tourist thing, where I'm driving around the block and trying to find, where can I park? And, oh, that, there's a spot, but it looks really busy there, and I'm driving my friend's car, and is this, you know, we are going to get sideswiped and stuff. I mean, it is, it is an issue. It does keep people from, you know, oh, I'll just go home. I won't stop if, you know, I'm that stressed about the parking. But I actually was at the library the other day, and one of the librarians said how much her life has changed now that she doesn't have to use her 15-minute break to, you know, move her car like they used to when they were next door. So, I mean, I think I'm in favor of this approach that was presented to us tonight. But I think changing the three to the four hours seems like a bigger, like a bigger decision that I think we'd need to just talk about and have some more data presented to us. So, thank you.
Mr. Caven?
Thank you. So the three-hour parking, does that expire at 6:00 PM? The three-hour limit?
Yes.
Yes, it does, okay.
Actually, it's probably, probably closer to 5:00, I think.
It's probably earlier, but I believe that it's not on Saturdays, Sundays, and after 6:00 is the official.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it definitely sounds like there is a need. So this would change just on those specific days for those 59 spaces that were identified.
And we would know in advance of those events.
Of what those dates are. But you also call this not-
Non-exclusive.
Thank you. Non-exclusive. I mean, I definitely want to do something to help make this be able to work, but I think that you're setting, I think changing or going into an agreement like this, we're going to start getting requests from other places. And yes, if I had the event venue down on Third Street, and I got 100 people coming for something at noon or 1:00 in the afternoon, well, hey, where's my, where's my set of placards as well? I got a, I got 100 people coming in here to come to this thing and walk up and down Third Street and spend money. So I want to be able to help out, because I understand what you're saying. If people don't want to walk the two blocks, they don't want to walk the two blocks, but, or maybe can't. I shouldn't say it that way. But I think we're setting ourselves up to have additional requests like this, and somebody's going to, how do we then turn around to them and say, well, yeah, you're right, you made your case as well, but no, we're not going to do this one, but that one over there, you know, gets precedent. So I think that needs to be, I think that that definitely needs to be thought about a little bit. As far as the changing from three hours to four hours, I know Alderwoman Burkhart just mentioned it as well, but my family and I spend a pretty good amount of time in downtown Geneva, and we live far enough to where generally we wind up driving. And whether we're coming for dinner at 5:00 or 6:00, I'll be honest, it's very rare that I have difficulty finding a place to park, even when it's fairly busy out. I think that the parking situation is pretty good, and I know that it can be a pain with the three-hour limit, but I think that also what makes it accessible for people who are continuing to come down and want to find a place to park. There are a lot of other suburbs that I've spent time in as well, and, yeah, much different experience. So something like that, I would definitely want to. I mean, maybe it's time for us to have a more comprehensive look, but that is something that I would really want to see, because I don't feel like it's generally a huge issue. Yeah, it's usually busy down here, and maybe sometimes I do have to park and walk a couple of blocks, but fortunately, I'm still able to make it a couple of blocks at least once in a while. So anyhow, I, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Simon's a veteran of many things, and of course, you recall fondly the days of the Parking Committee.
I don't know if fondly was part of the sentence, but yes.
I was waiting for you to pick up. Oh, my God. Mr. Kozarog, sir, and then Ms. Ruby.
I'm just trying to picture what the signage says. So it says, "Three-hour parking or by permit," or something like that?
No, they would have windshield placards.
You mean currently what the signs say?
Well, you said it would be non-exclusive, or-
Right. In other words, we, there would be no signs that say, "This is reserved parking." Anybody could park there. But those who park there who have a placard would not be ticketed if they overstay the time limit.
And so I'm, okay, I'm just trying to think of the police enforcing this. So, okay, they've been there for four hours. Now I got to get out of my right-hand driver vehicle-
I don't have to get out, because it's raining.
And then go look at the front of the car and see if they have it. Is that, is that kind of what would have to happen?
As they drive by, sorry.
As they drive by, they would see the placard in the windshield.
Much like the parking garage, the pack, the placards in the front, even though the
Or the permit parking lot.
Yeah, the permit parking lot.
Oh, would hang for in the rearview mirror, or something like that. Okay.
You'd be picturing Mike Simon.
I'm picturing he just laminates a couple things, or something like that, sticks it in the windshield, and frankly, it might be kind of hard to see.
Similar to what we do in the city lot. The city lot, we have placards.
Yeah, I know, I gotcha with the placards, yeah. So we would supply those, or he would just make some?
I think that would be to be determined, but yes.
Our proposal is Little Traveler.
Would, yeah, our proposal is tonight, is that Little Traveler would provide them.
They would create them, and the city would approve the design, and then he would distribute them to the, to the gas.
Gotcha. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm in favor of it, I guess. It seems like it's, I think as Kathleen said earlier in her presentation, there's a new event venue downtown. I'm sure they're going to be looking for spaces, and they like this opportunity. And maybe that answers Alderman Caven's issue of precedent. If we are taking all 49 spaces, Mike only needs 20 of them, max. Well, Copper Fox needs, you know, 20 more for their event at lunch. Well, we've got plenty to go around, I guess, is my point, where we don't really have to worry about a conflict between two businesses or multiple businesses. And if that starts to be an issue, then I think we have a really good problem on our hand, where that many people want to stay for these experiential Geneva, you know, days. So I don't know. I'm in favor of it. See how it goes. Seems like a good solution. Thank you.
Ms. Ruby?
Gabe can-
Yeah, I just wanted to, not anything bad, but that doesn't really, that doesn't alleviate what my thought process is, because somebody else may have many more events, and they might be on, well, I guess they don't do it on Saturdays, but if it was a Friday, and they have a four or a five-hour thing, and they have more people, and they say, well, I don't want them to have to walk the two blocks. I'm over here more by the commuter lot. There's plenty of on-street parking there. I want these three blocks over here, because it's closer to where I'm at. So I'd like the same type of setup for my people that are coming. They know where they're going to be able to park. So that doesn't, this may wind up working out just fine, but I'm more worried about additional requests coming like that, not these other same 59 spots. I'm more concerned about expanding it in different directions than somebody saying, well, this is the area that I want over here. So let's- I would just say that is our policy. We started a policy to make these 59 spots set aside for these things, and- Our policy that was requested by one specific business out of the 100 and whatever that are down here, that's definitely an answer, but I don't know.
I think what Kathleen, and Kathleen, please chime in, is we weren't necessarily saying if another business came, that it would be those same 59 spots. If another business came, we would identify what parking spaces would satisfy their requirements, but it would be the same type of agreement. They would have an agreement that it would be non-exclusive, but they would have to pay for the spots, and they would have to provide the placards. So we're not literally just talking about these 59 spots.
I thought it was.
In this particular case, we're talking about these 59 spots, because that's what works for this business owner.
I think to Gabe's point, if I may, I believe, and I'm certain Mr. Simon and everyone else tuning in believes, that if not the business on Third Street might be the second request, I will guarantee you, rightfully so, the next requestor, and if I worked there, I'd request it, would be Riverside Receptions. I've got a wedding, I've got 200 guests. Oh, there's a public lot across the street. I'd like 60 of those spots. And then, of course, you've got Dan Bar, you've got the other places, so it'll be an interesting scenario. So, I mean, I'm certain that would happen.
I misunderstood. So I'm glad, I'm glad we thought that out, so that I understood.
We thought about reserving spots in St. Charles, but that just became sticky. Ms. Ruby?
Thank you. So just to clarify, so there, we're talking about 59 spaces, but the signage is going to be unchanged. Just on the days that there are events, the people who got a placard from Little Traveler would not get a ticket if they were parked in one of those 59 spaces.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So that, I understand. So my thoughts on this are, I, exactly what Gabe said. I would, I definitely want to accommodate your business, support your business, but I strongly hesitate to make this exception. Just in general, exceptions are a slippery slope, in my opinion. And another just quick thing, I just, on Google Maps, I checked the distance from Little Traveler to St. Mark's, said it was 800 feet, and from Little Traveler to the parking garage, it said it was 800 feet. So it's the same distance. So if your customers are-
It's perception, it's not reality.
Yeah, so if they're making, if they're, you know, physically able to get to St. Mark's, I, I understand there are exceptions for everything, but it's the same distance. So that just, I don't know. The only other ideas I had were, you know, if you were taking a reservation, and you told people, you know, when they're making a reservation, please let us know if you need special arrangements. I mean, the chances are, they would have a handicap placard, so they would, I don't know how close a handicap spot is to your business, but I assume-
There are two of them on Fulton Street in front of the store.
So I assume that that's an option, and I, I don't know, just trying to brainstorm. Do, does Little Traveler have, you know, a van, or, you know, is there any possible transportation that Little Traveler could provide to help people get from, you know, the parking garage or the French Market Lot to your event? You know, is that, is that something?
We don't have anything, but I suppose we could rent a golf cart or something.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like a golf cart. So I, you know, that's obviously a huge expense for a small use, but just, yeah, just trying to brainstorm some solutions.
And when we throw out the number of 59, you know, keep in mind, I was thinking last week, the last event we had, we had 65 people, and Fulton Street was probably half-full. The St. Mark's lot was two-thirds full. So we don't have anywhere near 59 cars for 65 people. Most of the people come in groups. But, you know, we do need a place for them.
And people, when they sign up for these events, they know that there's walking involved?
Yeah, yeah, they know the part is across the street, and parts of the store.
Sure, sure. So I, yeah, I, I just feel this is a slippery slope for us to go down. But the four-hour parking, I would, I would be interested in having that conversation another day. But, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Before I recognize Mr. Swanson, I want to apologize to the committee. My comment regarding Riverside Receptions would not apply, because there are no enforcements on weekends. So, there you go. Mea culpa. Mr. Swanson?
That was exactly the point I was just going to make, is we're arguing here about evenings and weekends, when in fact, we're bringing people to downtown in the daytime when the parking is enforced. And to me, that's a, as Kozarog said, a good problem to have, and it's a, it's a good issue. And if someone else comes forward, great. That's another event that's going to help strengthen our downtown. Weddings and things that are bringing hundreds of people, we already have free parking. So as you just said, it would, it would not change. So I think this is a great idea, and it's, even if it's on a limited basis, and other people come to us, they're coming to us with ideas to bring people downtown during the day. So I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, to your point, Bob. So in essence, this is a consideration of a policy discussion that, for all practical purposes, does not include beyond 5:30.
Right.
Okay. And, so Mr. Kilberg?
Yeah. I just see this as sort of a test to some extent. Mr. Simon's been in business in Geneva for a long time. He's brought a lot of innovative ideas to the community. The fact that he's going to make the effort to send out a mailing to the customer, or an email, that would require this pass, this parking pass, I just think that, let's give it a try, and the thing is, is if it creates chaos or problems down the road, I think we can address it at that time. But again, this is through the week. Without getting into an extension of our parking limit from three to four hours, I think this is something that would be pretty easy to move forward with and give it a try. And I'm sure that he would be more than willing to report back after the end of the season and let us know how it turned out, and what challenges we might have encountered. But let's help our businesses on Third Street any way that we can. They're coming out of COVID. This is just, one thing that we can do is the City Council to help accommodate commerce in the community.
Anyone else? My gut tells me we have consensus with respect to directing Kathleen and Stephanie on drafting the ordinance for-
I didn't know that we did. I've heard, I've-
I'm sorry, I've heard, I've heard several that I don't think were in favor of it, and several that are, so I wasn't, I'm not quite sure where we're at.
Okay. The chair believes there is consensus. Of those who strongly feel we should not pursue this, by all means, speak up now. Okay. And we'll have this for consideration on the 20th. Is that right, Kathleen? Or the 27th? 20th, correct?
It's our intention to be on the 20th.
Okay. Kathleen would have been here live, but she's looking for parking, so.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much, Mike. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen, for the benefit of this committee? Any new business?
I would just say, I think everybody got the memo, memo email. We will also be having a special committee of the whole on the 27th this month. We had a couple more issues to cover, so we have our regular meetings next week, and then we'll be meeting again on the fourth Monday.
With that, ladies and gentlemen, entertain a motion to adjourn the Special Committee of the Whole. Mr. Marx makes that motion. All in favor of adjourning? All in favor of adjourning? Please indicate by saying, how many Mike Brunos are there? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Aye, 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 aye.